on television may be excused, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. As usual, if you would like to address the board during one of the open public comment sections, there are cards in the corner. You can fill one out, pass it to Mrs. Chilla, and she'll send it down to me. Thank you. I already have one. I wanted to start tonight off with a little update to the public from me personally. I want to apologize to some of the board members who I have, I don't think publicly, but maybe privately or inadvertently accused of leaking information to the Pittman lady and other people. I now know that was never board members doing that. It was a much worse situation that actually involved multiple people in sort of a coordinated effort. So I want to apologize for expressing frustration with that and with other board members. Over the past couple of months, it's actually been really refreshing to work with a lot of people here. And many of us, just, you know, for the sake of the public, have had that whole like fresh start, let's have a fresh start conversation. And we've been communicating and working together really well despite the fact of the beginning of the year. So our board is very much healing and committed to the kids and having a retreat in July. And I just wanted the public to know that. And I asked that the public please, you know, consider that and what we're trying to work on and support us and support the unity of us. And consider the source when you're reading posts or messages about people who are sometimes just chronically online and really might not have the insights and the facts about what really is going on between all of us. We had, quite a few of us had a great time at end of year events. I know Mrs. Hartong is going to report out on some of that in a little while, but I wanted to give that little start off in a positive way, letting you guys know some of that, some of that that's been going on behind the scenes. Yes?
Are you going to address the issue along those same lines in terms of the board and our knowledge of the crafting of the budget and who actually wrote the budget?
Well, that the budget was a recommendation from the superintendent's office, the administration, and we have been working with it since March, but we did not make it. I think that's what you're referring to because a lot of people think, why did you do this? Why did you do that? We were presented with a budget and everyone who's up here has been working to try and deal with that budget since March.
The reason why I bring it up is because it's been said to me and I've seen it, I've seen it on the internet that we actually created the budget because we don't have the superintendent. And that's not true. We were working with the budget that was presented to us.
Absolutely, yes, that's correct. Just to clarify that for whoever posted that, wherever they may have posted it. Anyone else have anything they need to say? Okay. We don't have any presentation. Do we have any items for discussion?
I have something to do with.
Yes.
I had contacted the superintendent's office. I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to, we've been going through a lot of negative stuff, but we have some positivity.
Turn your mic.
That we would recognize some of the people at the end of the year, like the prom queen, the Mr. Washington Township and, you know, any of those senior individuals. And I was told that by that that she was going to contact Ray, the principal of the high school, to see if that was possible. So I didn't get an answer on that. I don't know. I don't know where we are with that. I mean, it's at the end of the year, obviously, and the seniors are gone. I thought it would be a good idea for this meeting.
Graduation was beautiful and our seniors are heading out. They're doing their thing right now. As far as recognizing kids, I'm always about recognizing kids. One of the things that we had talked about at the board level is using the summer months to really work together and maybe refrain from public presentations. But certainly, and we've done this in the past, we have asked students to come back. And, you know, September comes, if we want to do, if we want to move away from the decision to have presentations in the summer, if we want to invite people back, that's fine with me, if students, if we can do that, we have July and August meetings to do that. So certainly I would be happy to do that.
Did you contact the building principal?
Yes, yes, yes. We have talked about, your specific request was about Mr. Washington Township.
Right, right.
Yes, so that's something that.
What was the results of that?
Well, there's no, there's no real results. It's just about are students available to come back to do those things if that's what we decide to do?
Well, I thought it would be nice for this time.
Right, something positive.
An end of year. Anyone else have a comment? You can, yes. Oh, good. Indulge me a little, I never speak. So, the 2024-25 school year has come to an end, and I had the privilege of attending multiple senior year activities. The first event was on June 12th, which Julie and I attended, the baccalaureate. This event was filled with amazing guest speakers as well as performers and, I don't know what that word is. By our extremely talented seniors. The second event was on June 16th, which Julie and I attended, the senior award night. Senior award night was the first chance for our seniors to wear their gowns proudly. The class of 2025 collected a total of $361,150 by multiple memorial awards, community scholarship, PTO awards, and the Washington Township Public School Awards. The final senior year event for our 2025 class was the 60th Annual Graduation on June 17th. This year, myself, Julie, Carol, and Elaine had the privilege to witness 529 graduates walk across the stage proudly. The many speakers gave us all something to think about. Our salutatorian Noah Elliott reminded us to live in the moment. Our valedictorian, Delaney Schwartz, had us thinking, what do you want to be? Who do you want to be? Our acting superintendent, Annette Miller, encouraged everyone to get ready to make an impact. And each story is unique. The end of the night held a message that was intended for everyone, everywhere, from our executive principal, Raymond Anderson. Put your phone down, talk to someone. Congratulations, class of 2025. Thanks, Linda. A note about the senior awards, just for parents. If you've never, if you don't have a child getting an award or a scholarship, you probably don't attend this event. So if, it is something I think great for parents to go to because you see how many scholarships are offered and what they're offered for. They're so specific, you know? Like I looked at certain scholarships and I'm like, oh, my daughter should have applied for that. It was like going to a community college to major in accounting, you know? It was so specific and most people don't apply for scholarships. So just like from a parent perspective, if you, that's video, we recorded that, right, Kevin? Okay. So just to parents out there, it's long, it's a long meeting because we give a lot of scholarships. But if you watch that, you'll see. There's a list, okay? Yeah, I mean, that stuff, especially in this financial day and age, every single scholarship helps. I can speak personally about that. And we give a lot of scholarships. And Mr. Anderson did a great job and also Mrs. Miller, like you guys did such a great job with all these events. You're like an emcee, Ray, when he's not even like, I'm like, he's not even looking at the paper. So all of the events were really nice for the students and we had great weather. It was just, those are the things that are important, I think, to, to mention when, you know, we have a lot of upset about things going on. Thank you.
We were just talking in the other room and it was all inspiring to sit back and watch. So my son graduated from Township, but we were inside. And I thought, oh, it's so nice, it's so intimate and small. But to be on that stage and look out and see 529 kids in caps and gowns, it was almost brought a tear to your eye. Like if you've never been to one or watched the video, like these kids, they were, it was inspiring. It really was. And to see them all walk across the stage and my, my heart melts because like Mr. Anderson and Mr. Savaris, it felt like they had a connection with almost every kid.
Every kid that walked.
Like Mr. Anderson had a handshake with one kid. Mr. Savaris had a full-blown conversation with one kid. Like it's, you don't realize how special these people are until you experience them outside of their element. Actually, I'm the most unempathetic person in the world. And I actually filled up to cry watching Mr. Anderson and James Connor do whatever handshake they've done on a daily basis. It was crazy.
I said to Ray, every single kid looked me in the eye and shook my hand. Like I don't know what you, if you told them to make sure they do that. But every single kid said like, thank you. I said, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education. They'd be like, thank you so much. And I thought, I only shook half their hands and every single one of them had the banners and stuff. It was really.
It was a great class.
Yeah, they were a good class. They were good. Okay. I wanted to mention too, yeah, all right. The, I've been going to some of the New Jersey School Boards events in the summer. I don't work, well, I do work in the summer, I teach online, but I have availability to go to these events. I went to the summit for president, the board presidents yesterday up in Mannville, which was great. And I got a lot of good information there and good perspective, God bless you, from other board presidents in other districts. So there were hundreds of us there and then they split us into groups of 12 to do small group instruction, which actually the way they did it, I thought would be a good format for our retreat. So I'll send you guys that in an email. But it was just nice to talk to people from other districts about what's going on. And I also went to the AI conference, I think I sent you guys that information. And I'm going to meet with Lori Banlu, our field service rep, about, just because everyone works and has different schedules, especially in the summer, but just putting together for us some of the handouts and materials that they give, like printed. You know, not like go to the New Jersey School Boards website and look at it, but just something printed that you can have at meetings. This is an example of just one thing. Basic parliamentary procedure, it's just, I'll pass it around. I asked for her to send me 10 of these. It, and, you know, we did exercises, thank you, Ari, on it. And this is great to have in a meeting. So I just encourage people to go on and log in to your account. If you want to go to anything, all you have to do is just say, Lori, can you sign me up for this? That's what, she does it, she pays for it, they pay your mileage. If you're free, you know, you really should do it. One of the goals that we have, I hope we have, or that we approve is getting training, more training through New Jersey School Boards. Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, Mr. Distillio, do you have a report for us?
Okay, I think it worked, thank you. So thank you, Ms. Kuzempel, Ms. Hartong, for talking about graduation and all the events that led up to graduation. In addition to Mr. Anderson and Mrs. Miller, all the wonderful teachers and families and parents that contributed to that event. It was, it was fantastic. So thank you for celebrating that. I wanted to talk about a couple of things that are happening relatively soon. One is in the town, our Fourth of July celebration. The parade is going to begin at 6:30 PM. Fireworks is going to begin at 9:00. There's still time to participate. This is run through the town. So if your, if your organization is interested in participating, please reach out to Lisa Collins at LCollins@TWP.Washington NJ.us. And then there's going to be food vendors and novelty items that'll be in the 9:10 parking lot that evening. Also, our WTEF, which is our Washington Township Educational Foundation, is sponsoring the 28th Annual Golf Classic, which is going to be held on Saturday, August 9th, 2025, at the White Oaks Country Club in Newfield. It begins roughly around 10:30 and ends around 5:00 with dinner and an awards ceremony. There are prizes for each hole. And we're looking for volunteers not only to contribute to basket auctions, but also to contribute to sponsoring a hole or being another type of sponsor. If you're interested in supporting us in any way, please reach out to my department's secretary, Heather Sullivan, at H Sullivan at WTPS.org. And finally, as far as an end of the year recognition that I would like to give, I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Lindstedt for his help this year with the inaugural season of the We Are Township Leadership Podcast. For those of you who don't know, that was published every two weeks and it's on YouTube and Spotify. Just a couple of things, it was a collaborative effort with Mr. Lindstedt and Mr. Pacina for publishing it across the district website, Spotify, YouTube, my LinkedIn account. We initiated the project with key leaders, each of whom were nominated three exceptional students. So we recognized 15 teachers this year along with 45 students. And some of the teachers that were recognized were Dr. Micali, Officer Hamilton, Ms. Mason, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Fraction Mills, and Mr. Schatzman of the high school, Ms. Egazy, Ms. Kerfoot, Mr. Cabrera of Bunker Hill, Mr. Crawley, Ms. Hallicks of Chestnut Ridge, Mr. Jeb Wobney, Ms. Matusa Araliga, and Mr. Zakowski of Orchard Valley. And each of them picked three individuals and they talked about what it means to be a leadership leader in not only our town, but moving forward. And it ranged from students' grades eight through 12. I encourage, they're about, it's about 25 to 35 minutes long each episode. I encourage you, if you haven't viewed any, please go back and look at it and then see some of our exceptional people to echo what Mr. Ross was talking about. Not necessarily, we don't necessarily need a board meeting to recognize them, but you could see the great things that they're doing. So I would appreciate you guys looking at that. Thank you, and that's, that's my report, Ms. Kuzempel.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for April and May 2025?
So moved.
I'm sorry, back it up. Can I have a motion to approve correspondence, items one, two, and three?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the minutes. April and May 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any items of old business?
Yeah, I have one.
Scott?
I would like to make a motion to bring Dr. Hibbs back off of leave to return as superintendent.
Is there a second? Carol, second, any discussion? No discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
Some of the new things that have come to light and I just think it's time. And thankfully, Annette, you know, stepped up and we don't have the same financial burden, but I think time to bring him back.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mrs. Bloom?
Abstain.
Mrs. Clancy, she's abstain. Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Abstain.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Abstain. Motion failed. Other items of old business? Connie, did you say you had something? Okay.
I have a couple of things to follow up. Back in February, I had a question on the agenda, a field trip to Indiana for the cost. And I asked about how many students were going to be going. And I just want to let you know, on 4/29, I received an email from Mrs. Miller and that no one is going to the festival and the item was removed. It was pulled. So I just want to kind of tie that up. I have, I have a couple questions on updates, where we might be with it for Mrs. Miller. I had brought up the idea of looking into the National Junior Honor Society for middle schools. And I'm just wondering, any update on that?
No, not yet. We are, we did talk about bringing that to committee though with Mrs. Garber.
Okay. Another update, I had talked about the fact that counselors, we approved counselors to work in the summer. And parents have said in the past that, and part of the job in the summer is to be available to your councilees or to someone that has a question about the guidance program. And since we have websites for all our schools, I asked if we could consider having the counselor's schedule, what days they're going to be in the building. So parents, if they wanted to talk to the counselor, they would know when they're going to be there. I wonder if we have any update on that.
Counselors are available.
No, I do not have an update on their specific schedules to be posted on their website.
Is there, is there a timeframe that maybe some decision would be made?
Sure, when Ms. Gormaldi returns, I can definitely have a conversation with her.
Okay, thank you.
Also, just real quick, Connie, Annette did mention that to me. She had that on her list and that she was looking into the actual website update overall. So that's not, we don't have information on that yet tonight, but that day come up.
Yeah, I wasn't looking into a lot of work. It just, whoever does the, the school, the principal who does the website, Connie Baker will be in on July, blah, 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 August. Simple, takes five minutes. Okay, thank you. Another update, we, we approved a former employee who will be working in another district during the summer to do summer work for $50 an hour. And we talked about that when these kinds of things come up, that we are going to get a, a kind of a ballpark figure of what it means. Is it 100 hours? Is it 20 hours? And I think, Mrs. Miller, you said you were going to let us know that. Any, any update on that?
So the updated ideas, no hours so far. And as far as the anticipated costs, I don't think it will be a lot because we are, the goal was to transition. So our exiting employee, we want to have available because we have specific student matters that we want to be sure that there's a transition piece for our staff who are still here because obviously special ed continues on in the summer months for ESY. As far as the amount of money, I anticipate, I do not have a do not exceed. The item did carry, but I can certainly bring a do not, an anticipated approximate money at the next board meeting.
Yeah, thank you. That, I think that's what we were talking about. Thank you very much.
I think I had that on the list for committee too, Annette.
Okay. I also like to make a motion, I want to make two motions. The first motion involves a policy that appears outdated. It's a policy outdated, a policy 0176 regarding our solicitor and negotiator. When the Bush law firm came on board, our solicitor did the negotiations. Ari, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's no legal thing that you have to be separated between the solicitor and the negotiator. It's up to the board. Three years ago, we didn't do that. We had one solicitor and the solicitor did the negotiations. So I'm, I'm making a motion that in policy 0176, Roman numeral three, number one, we strike out number one.
Do you want to read that or do you want me to read that?
Oh, I don't have it up here. Do you want to read it?
It says, "The board will hire an attorney to represent its interest in all collective negotiation agreements with the associations due to the board solicitor's role in advocating for the board and individual school district employees in various circumstances, i.e. student discipline hearings, special education litigation. The board solicitor shall not serve as the attorney representing the board in collective bargaining." So is there a second for her motion and then we can have discussion? Ralph, second, okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I have something.
Yeah.
I think we've discussed this before. My request, I think several meetings ago, was that we bounce this off conflict council because I don't think it would be appropriate to ask Ari to weigh in on a policy that would directly affect him. But I think the decision back then was no, that we didn't, you know, the board's decision collectively was not to go to that. But I do think before we make a change like that, we should check with a, you know, you say it appears to be outdated, but there's nothing from Strauss Sessmeyer that would suggest that. I just think it would be in our best interest to check with an attorney that's not conflict, conflicted on that point before we abolish it or before we amend it, sorry.
I mean, you know, what we're going to strike is it says, "Due to the board solicitor's role in advocating for the board and the individual school district employees in various circumstances regarding litigation and so on and so forth." I just don't know if it's outdated in terms of having a conflict of interest. I think we talked about this in executive. You know, the fact that when Bush law came in, you ignored the policy and didn't follow it doesn't mean that it's not appropriate to have the policy and it's not a matter of having a different law firm. I think what we were saying is to having two different people do the role. So, I mean, the board can vote as they wish. I just don't think it's to say that it's potentially outdated. I don't think there's anything outdated about having a possible conflict of interest, which is stated here.
My, I did reach out to Peg Mehan about this, just to see why this was a policy. She mentioned to me that at one point in time, it was the same attorney that did both. And because someone thought, or sorry, it was two different people. And because someone thought, oh, that's the board attorney, they like assaulted that person in public verbally and it was not the right person. So that's kind of the history of this. That being said, when I was on the board before and we worked with K. Parton Skatcher, we always had, you know, Joe Bentley was our solicitor and Rob Mucelli was our negotiator. I like Aaron and I like Ari for both. I mean, my, I think to like address everyone's concerns, we could leave it and run it by a conflict attorney to see if the language permits us to have Aaron and Ari. Or we could just take this out and just say, I'm not in favor of paying an attorney to tell us how to write a policy. That's, that's just like a, I just think it's under our purview to change it. But, you know, I want to talk to Ari about, I would be, have no prob, I mean, I like you, Ari, but if Aaron was here, it's really six in one and half a dozen in the other. You know what I'm saying?
When I say outdated, we had no issue with, with Ari being the solicitor and negotiator three years ago. We don't have an issue now, okay?
Well, I wasn't on board that, so I don't know why you did that.
So, I mean, listen, I just, I just, listen, we tend to just talk about things and we never come to any kind of decision, we're going to talk about it in committee. I'm just putting it out there, let's vote on it one way or another and, and be done with it.
Okay, make another point, sorry. Comment to your point, Julie, about, I mean, it isn't our purview to make policy, but even when we make other policy adjustments, we bounce many of those policy adjustments off of the existing board attorney because they can have legal ramifications. You know, there was the one about safety and certain things that were in there that we asked his opinion on. I think probably asked his opinion on policies every other meeting at some point. So the cost of asking that type of question to the conflict council, I can't imagine is more than $100, right? It's not going to take them more than an hour, but could save us from potential litigation further down the road. So that's my only point. I think it would be prudent to get a quick read from the conflict council on that.
We can do that. Any other discussion? I just want to make sure everyone's like, if you're voting, you're ready to vote, you know, you know, what you're voting on.
I'm not really sure how we're voting then if we're getting a conflict council.
So her motion is, the motion on the floor is to strike number one completely. Carol made the point that the first sentence in that is actually okay. Is that what you were saying, Carol? "The board will hire an attorney to represent its interest in all collective negotiations." Like that's fine. It's the rest of it that should be stricken, that Connie's suggesting to strike. So the motion you're voting on is to strike that yes or no? If you vote no to strike it, then if that's the way, if that's the way the vote goes, I would send it to the conflict council or Annette would, somebody would send it to the conflict council to tell us if that wording is okay. What it says is, in caps, "Board Solicitor shall not serve as the attorney." So like whoever sits here is the board solicitor. Like, in other words, I'm conflicted on negotiation, so I will like never see Ari again if he's negotiating. Do you know what I mean? I have no reason to talk to the negotiator. But the board solicitor is the one that sits here, the one that I would call about stuff. We would, we would call about all our questions that we have and things like that. So I think the language is probably okay and it's what we use with K. Part. So if the motion fails, if the motion fails, we'll send this to Subsy, the other attorney, and just ensure that that is the case. And if it's not, you can bring it up again to strike it again.
Yeah, I just, I just have a question. I think Ari can answer it. Legally, does a board have to have two separate people?
I don't really want to get too involved in this because it concerns me, but to short answer your question is legally, no.
Okay, because my experience that I've had, there have been solicitors that were the negotiator in most cases.
I'd like to call the question.
Many districts don't even have a lawyer at their meeting. Many districts don't even have a lawyer at their meeting, too. We have the luxury of that, but some don't. Okay, call the question.
Yeah, yes is a strike. Strike it out, yes, obvious thing, right? Am I right?
I think the first sentence should stay, it says, "The board will hire an attorney to represent its interest in all collective negotiation agreements with the associations." Like, we need that, right? We have to have a negotiator. So. Yes vote strikes the rest of it. A no vote leaves it as is, and then we have to make an arrangement with Bush Law Group to split it up, to split them, to split them. Is everyone clear on that? Do you need more time?
So if we vote yes, you can have the same person for both, correct?
No, if you vote yes, then you're voting to strike it out.
Just real quick Julie, is there a reason, is there, sorry, is there a reason why we can't put this in policy? To have like, I mean, I'm just curious if we could just, it's, obviously it's a fruitful discussion.
I mean, if everyone votes no, it's going into, I think it should go into a committee anyway.
Into a policy committee?
Yeah.
To talk about it.
We don't always do that. I'd like to call the question.
Go ahead. I just have one other suggestion that I could look into, based on what you said, what, the feedback from Peg Mayhan, if it's, if it could be that we added that part to the policy because of a personal experience we had, so we could go back to Strauss Esme and look at their template policy, and find out, you know, through their resources, if, you know, that was in fact something that we added that can be removed, we wouldn't have to send it to anybody else.
I might be okay with that, in other words, what you're saying is, if Esme says that you don't need two people in there.
Right, like if we added that because of whatever that situation is that happened in the past.
I'm willing to withdraw right now my motion, and that we do exactly that, is everybody okay with that?
Yes. Okay. And I wasn't suggesting to withdraw, I was just saying that is something, knowing that history, that's valid.
Well, it makes sense, because we do have them, and they guide us with our policies, and let's see what their boiling plate policy is. I'm fine with that. I'm withdrawing. I want to make a second motion. I mentioned this when I voted for the budget, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about this. The concern is about employees that have 20 or more, support staff employees that have 20 or more years' experience, to be able to get their benefits back and their time back for those individuals. Am I allowed to say how many there are, or no? I'm not naming names, I was just going to give total. Okay, okay, I can even mention the cost, okay? Okay, no, no, but I can mention the number and the cost? Okay, I'll mention the number at this point, nine, we're talking about nine employees. So I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the administration, now that the budget has been approved, and things, you know, are kind of balancing out, that the administration go back to the budget, and look at the budget, and see if we're able to support these nine employees with benefits and their time back for those that are 20 years and above service. Want me to shorten that somehow?
No, I understand what you're saying, and we did get an email about that, too, and my understanding is Annette is looking into it.
I'm already on it.
Yeah, I don't think a motion's necessarily appropriate for that, if you asked Annette to look into something, and she's looking into it, I assume you're going to get that information, I think a motion might be appropriate at a later time, but not now.
Now, what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
When did their benefits end?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When do their benefits end, I'm asking.
August 31st, correct?
Are you talking about the people who you were just referencing in terms of 20 years and more? Is that who you're talking about?
Well, my understanding, I asked the question unless I heard it wrong, that all of our employees have benefits until the 31st of August, because the way that money is deducted is on a yearly basis.
So you want it resolved before then?
Yes.
We were told the 30th, but I thought it was.
I have the ability to, I'm already looking into this, and I just need, I need some time, there are some steps that we have to follow in order to make this happen, because we're working with an approved budget.
Am I correct that our employees who lost their jobs have benefits until the 31st of August?
I think it really depends on a higher date. I don't have this answer, I do believe it depends, for the specific people you're talking about have been here quite a while, and so I believe they would, but I don't want to misspeak. Our HR director is not here, but I will tell you that we will definitely, and we have spoken about this, we are definitely moving as fast as we can in terms of having others help us in this process, I spoke to the county today about this, so, yeah, we just need a little bit of time. But as far as benefits, the best answer to that question is, and I've guided other employees to do this, they have to reach out to our benefits coordinator, I would, I would not want to misspeak and have somebody not have benefits and think they do.
Well, when someone, when someone signs a contract, isn't it to June 30th? Okay, so if it goes to June 30th, I would imagine that's when their benefits stop.
It depends on how, each month they contribute, 12, over 12 months.
I don't want to misspeak, because it's too important of a topic.
Yeah.
We should know that, though.
I think we, I'd like to get this information in an email from Sean, because it has to do, I believe, with people's start dates.
I will, after the, after the meeting, I will be more than happy to have him do that, and I, and I send confidential memos to the board weekly, so.
And I have it on my list for the retreat, too.
That doesn't give the people who are losing them any understanding of whether they end the 30th of June or 30th of August.
Well, I thought HR spoke with everyone. Yeah, they're motioning that it was taken care of. They're all aware. HR met with people individually, is what we were told.
So you haven't been till August?
Okay. She can't say that. It depends. She can't go back and forth, but, it depends. Not like, people didn't, people didn't just get like riffed and with no information about, like, and no meeting in HR, is what I was told. That happened.
Again, again, the best answer to the question is, and I know many, many employees have done this, because I have spoken to HR throughout the day, every day, and they are assuring me that people are reaching out to get the right answers, but I do not want to misspeak publicly and give people a date that is not accurate.
Okay.
They should have that right now.
They should continue to reach out to the, no, they, Ralph, they have to reach out to HR, they have.
Any other, anything else for old business? Thank you. Going once, going twice, can I get a motion open to the public?
Motion.
Second? Who's seconding that?
Second.
All in favor? Dan Fox.
Hi, Dan Fox, Washington Township. My wife's a teacher in the district, I'm a school business administrator.
I don't know if that mic's better? Yeah, you have to be like very close to it.
Okay, I'm a school business administrator, my wife's a teacher in the district, I was the assistant BA here 30 years ago. So I noticed on the agenda that you're hiring preschool paras at five and three-quarter hours. We have, my district has had the grant for about eight years now, and over the time, we've learned a lot of things that work, and a lot of things that don't work. Preschool is a different animal, it is so different than anything else you're, you're doing. Three-year-olds have a tendency just to follow the kid that's in front of them. I have serious concerns about the safety issues, about not having a para for the full day. We, you know, if you're putting the kids on the bus, the three-year-old will follow that kid right onto the wrong bus, if you have a substitute bus driver who isn't checking and doesn't know the kids well, I mean, there's just a lot of potential for problems, and it's a grant. There's money in the grant, I assume there's that for the preschool, so what I'm asking is that, could you look at splitting, or just carving out an exception for preschool paras, because I really think that they need to be there the full day? You're, you're talking about, you've got a classroom of 15 kids, one teacher, one para, which I think is crazy, in that, just having two people, and then for, I think it's a half hour a day, you're only going to have the teacher. So I have big concerns, and if it's grant money anyway, maybe something can be done to carve that out. Second thing, it wasn't on my list, but I noticed that Mrs. Baker, in this meeting and a prior meeting, made a motion, never rescinded it, and nothing was ever finished with her motion. So, it should be called for a second unless she rescinds it. Okay, thank you.
Can everybody hear me? I could, I could talk about the preschool question if you wanted that answered.
Yeah, Gretchen?
Sure, sure, so the preschool, it's not a grant, it's aid, it's state aid, so it's preschool education aid. Our preschool day is shorter, so they do have full-time coverage with an assistant, so they are there for arrival and dismissal for the full time. So it's a full day, meets the requirements of a full day of school, but it's not like an elementary school hours a day, so our assistants are covered. I think you asked, there was another question you asked, and I didn't write it down, I apologize about the preschool. Oh, so yeah, so we're only allowed to have one para per the grant guidelines, they won't allow us to have another, it'll get, it won't get approved. So I'm only allowed to use the funding for one certified teacher and one para per classroom. I'm allowed relief teachers, particularly for relieving, you know, the other para for, the teacher for having a prep, and/or the para for having a prep, like, or lunch, I should say. I'm allowed to have a relief teacher if kids don't have a bathroom in the line of sight. I get, I have to explain that a lot, as to why, you know, because they have to walk kids to the bathroom, because the classroom assistant can't necessarily take all the kids to the bathroom down the hall. So we're allowed that, but I have to minimize that number and explain each one why, and sometimes they come back and say the ratio is too high. So I do ask, you know, for more, for coverage, especially for the, for the laboratories, but in terms of the day, they're fully covered, because our day is shorter.
Thank you. And Connie, did you, you rescinded both those motions, I know you definitely, I know you loudly said you rescind the first one, but the second one?
Well, I rescinded the first one, and I got kind of dismissed on the second, but you said you're taking care of it, so I guess you rescind it.
Okay, I thought you said.
As long as it's being done, and we're going to try to get it before they use their benefits.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Watts? Skipping you? Okay. At the mic, at the mic, yeah, so we can hear you. We have, we have full day kindergarten, yes.
And preschool?
We have full day pre-K now.
Is it open to all students now?
I'll wait until you're done all your comments, but.
Equity, I noticed in your, there's a lot of letters of discipline, so what's going on with that? And can you answer that?
Yes, just give me all your questions, and then we'll answer them all at one time.
Okay, I would like to know the ratio on the discipline matters, because if I say something here, and some of you like will giggle and laugh, that's the behavior that's happening inside of a school. Younger people are unable to understand, some rich kids who are 10 percenters can understand shaming, like, you see how long my hair is? And I wear a cap. A young child who's very well-educated will say, "Your hair shaming," you understand? Or body shaming. Do anybody understand that? Kids don't understand that. So when you laugh, like, I say something, and you laugh at it, that's a form of ignorance. And I'm intentionally using adults, because if you can see yourself in doing something that is ignorant, then how are you doing it with children? Do you understand that? So the top percenters would say, "That's body shaming, or hair shaming," because you want someone to look exactly like you. Let's do the Italian joke. Russian president said, "When Russia step their foot on any land, it becomes Russia," correct? In my Italian joke, I said, in an Italian joke, the first thing, never let a vicious man on your land, because if you do, he will steal your land. Then he will destroy, Italian joke 300, any A-dominant men. Mass incarceration, inequality in education, to me, is the equivalent of attacking A-dominant males. African-American males, who you find is a threat, you attack them. I hope you laugh at that. Every time you laugh, we call it playing it off, that's an urban vernacular. If you notice, I changed how I talk, sometime I talk like, hello, how are you today? And the other times I say, yo. Neither one is, all of it's American English. In business, you have to talk a certain way, but to get you to understand that if you're not training certain kids with the right knowledge and education, and you could have stopped that a long time ago, you had the ability to put a safeguard in place in this community, so that no child is left behind in their education, because of any reason, their color, their sex, any of that, but you chose not to. And right now, if you look at the billboards everywhere, little Johnny can't read and write, little Becky can't read, Marcus can't read and write. I got in trouble here, because I said my children couldn't do the math that I could do, engineering, someone called the FBI, because I said my son had to do advanced math. If you go to the Trillionites of Pennsylvania, and he came to the board, he would say, "I'm telling the truth." He's not going to hire you $150 if you do not have an advanced education in science or math. He's going to look at you and laugh, "I'm not going to hire you." You can't get to it if you don't get preschool, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, you can't get it. And so when you stifle the education of someone, and then you blame everybody, everybody, it's because in place, the way you treated me, is how you could be treating some of those children, and they're not understanding it. You can't body shaming, you can't hair shaming, you can laugh at everything I say. I'm here making sure that you do, so that you see yourself, because it's hard to see people who are really racist, because they often hide. And then some people, they get caught up in, if I speak out, then they're all getting jumped. So the people who are really truly good, God-fearing, they don't want to say anything, because they're afraid that if I say something, then they'll gang on me. Poor little lady, I, I don't know who, what she was saying, they were attacking her and her children, and I feel sorry. They have blew up my car, my house, and everything else, called the FBI, you can't imagine the evils that they have done, because I'm speaking up against inequality. A rich white guy in Trillion, Trillion here in Pennsylvania would say, "I'm telling the truth." Who's not going to hire?
Mrs. Watts? I want to answer your questions.
Good.
First of all, we have pre-K, we got it a few years ago, and each year, you get more grant money to have more students join, so it's been a lottery, but next year, I think, is going to be the first year where we hit the universal number? I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, not.
Okay.
So going, okay, so the universe is double our first grade, so that number's always flux, however, we have to get 90% of that, of that first, doubled first grade. However, we have to get 90% of that, of that first, doubled first grade. We still have some more, hopefully, providers to acquire as well as, however, the people that are applying for our lottery, we are running through our waitlist.
Why don't you just tell, say how many pre-K students we have this year and how many sites?
So we'll be serving 630 students this year. That includes locations at Head Start and six provider sites.
Right. And all those kids then can move into our full free, it's free, pre-K is full day, it's free, kindergarten is full day, it's free.
Right.
And then your question about the letters of discipline, I can't speak to. One thing I will assure you is that as an officer of this board, equity and equality for all of the students is definitely enforced. And I don't want to speak for everyone on the board, but I think I can, that there's not one person here that would disagree with the fact that any student that's making disparaging comments about someone's appearance or any sort of discriminatory conversation should be, have a discipline for that or a HIB for that.
You understand that it is deeper than that.
Well, I do understand that, but your time is up, and I want to see if Mrs. Miller wants to respond or can say anything about the discipline. They're pretty average numbers from what we normally see. I mean, listen, we're having a lot of behavioral problems in our schools. It's not all related to bullying, and this is something that we're working very hard, the district's working hard to address, and every district, I think, is working hard to address.
No, we're not talking about bullying. We're talking about separation of people.
Take it, take another card if you want and come back up the second time, Mrs. Watson. Thank you. Sherri Hile?
Hello, I'm Sherri Hile, and I work at Whitman School. So first, I would like to say thank you for giving me my job back. It was a really stressful several weeks, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to be able to come back. Sadly, a lot of my coworkers are not as lucky because their hours were cut, and they lost their benefits, and they are already seeking employment elsewhere. And we are going to lose some very good people. So that is a shame, and I hope it, something, some miracle happens and they can come back with me, because that would be awful if they don't. I have a question. So I have a upcoming senior, and I have to schedule his senior portraits, and I don't know how to schedule them, because I don't know with all the cuts, what his senior year is going to look like. So I guess my first question is, are clubs cut, are sports cut? Is it pay-to-play? I know that was discussed a lot. The co-curriculars, like, what, what is his senior year going to look like? That's my first question, because he's very involved in different things. My second question is, this past year, I had the opportunity to be with my fifth graders, who I adore greatly, and I'm very concerned, because they're going to be moving into middle school. And usually, in the past, I believe we went, we took a bus over to the middle school, and they got a chance to walk around, so they have some comfort going into a brand-new school. That didn't happen this year. So my question is, are they going to do some sort of transition camp for those fifth graders going to the sixth? Because I know there's a lot of anxiety that's happening currently. And like, is the locker move-in day that? So I guess they're my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the activities at the high school, nothing is changing at the high school. So I'm not sure the connection to the senior photos, but if your son, like, or your child plays basketball, you can take a picture with the basketball. If he gets on the team, I guess. And then the fifth grader moving up, transition?
So that, that actually went away several years ago. I don't know the age difference between your children. It went a day when, it went away when we lost the half-days that were attributed to that. We used to go over during the half-days. Now they, the middle schools have done things in the summer events to acclimate kids to the new building.
They still do the locker move-in, though, day, right? And there's not a two-day transition for the sixth graders? I thought there was. That, that went away since my son was a sixth grader?
I'm deferring to Mr. Castilio for recent knowledge.
Okay.
Sorry.
As of last year, we had a two-day orientation where sixth graders came in, they met for the first time with their sending schools, or their sister schools, rather. And then sometime during that summer, we had locker move-in night, where kids came and decorated the inside of their lockers. As far as I know, those things are still in place at this moment.
Thanks, Mike. Hannah Maraz?
The school board's recent actions show little regard for the students. Loved and respected educators are being discarded like they're disposable. Educators who've built strong and meaningful connections are being switched to different schools without explanation. A well-loved janitor who brought positivity throughout the school is being switched to the night shift. Why? Is it because you needed to, or is it because we are so indebted that you're using him as a scapegoat, hoping he retires so the board doesn't have to take responsibility? Instead of cutting and switching educators, we should stop distributing money to unnecessary things. Why should the children pay because HIBs can't count? Why are we cutting interventionists, staff who work directly with students who struggle academically or have learning disabilities? Is one of the most damaging decisions you can make. These educators provide much-needed support to children with learning disabilities or lower IQs. What do you gain by removing them? A couple dollars to the budget? At what cost? These aren't just jobs. They are the difference on whether a child gives up or pushes through. Moving interventionists displays you giving up on the children and expenses save your own job. You are essentially telling students they don't matter enough to be helped. And if you're comfortable enough to send that message, then there's a deeper problem than a budget deficit. How about we start reevaluating the poor financial decisions made by the board? Every time there's an issue, you should discuss how this affects the children, but most of you don't ask yourselves these critical questions. All you do is think about what is the easiest thing to do. Why don't you cut positions that were newly created, such as dean of students, technology coordinators, or elementary supervisors? I advise you to start considering the kids, because if you don't, not only will the children be harmed, but also the very image and agenda you care so much about. Based on your actions, your decisions are not about what's best for the kids, but what's easier for the board. Start rethinking why you joined the school board, because at this point, it's not about the budget, it's about control.
Thank you, Hannah. I think to, just like, kind of address in general what you were saying, as you heard from Mrs. Hile, like, not every, people come back, people move around. Sometimes people have to get moved to save their job. So if something's cut in one school, they have to go to another school for a little, you know, for a year or for a while, so that they still have a job. So that's one of the things that, that could be affecting some of the things you're seeing. And also, the summer's not over. That's when a lot of things get, you know, reallocated, I guess you could say. And so it's not totally over yet in terms of where people are going to land. So, but thank you for your comments. I really appreciate them. Barbara Dada?
So I sent this email out to everybody about two weeks ago. Julie, you were the only one, and Patricia responded. Carol, I'm Connie. I want to thank you for bringing out the transparency here. As usual, you're the only one who comes out and tells everybody what's going on, because we never hear it from anybody. So I wrote to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the current condition of our school district. What we are witnessing is not just dysfunction, it has become a public embarrassment. I am formally calling for a comprehensive, sorry, I can't read my own writing, comprehensive, independent audit conducted by an external accounting firm with no affiliation to Gloucester, Camden, or any surrounding counties. This audit should be, should span at least the 10, at least the past 10 years to ensure full transparency and accountability. My longstanding opposition to Mr. HIBs is rooted in deep concerns from his previous leadership roles in Marlboro. And two weeks ago, I had just found out that he was also dismissed from Mount Holly. I think you should all take this into consideration as to why he was dismissed. His presence continues to contribute to division, low morale, and deeply troubling culture, particularly affecting those who serve students with special needs. Now he is pursuing legal action while simultaneously collecting a salary, yet the public is expected to fund the cost of his lawsuit. This is really unacceptable. If any board member has filed lawsuits against another, those costs should not be borne by taxpayers. These legal battles should be resolved personally or withdrawn immediately. They do not serve our students or our community. In my opinion, HIBs, Mr. HIBs' contract should be bought out, and he should resign immediately. Our district cannot afford to remain entangled in these costly and demoralizing lawsuits. Reportedly, maybe about six, more or less, lawsuits from people on this board. Furthermore, we must direct our budget scrutiny toward administrative excess, not toward teachers and staff who support our students every day. Multiple principals, unnecessary support staff, vague budget lines such as miscellaneous or line items represent irresponsible use of public funds. At the same time, basic repairs like leaking roofs go unaddressed, while non-essential beautification process, projects continue. Who authorized this spending and why, when so many critical issues remain unresolved? Plus, I understand that maybe a gym was done, re-venerate, re-venerate, whatever, and maybe a new gym was put in. That money was spent towards that. So I'd like to bring that to your attention. That's a rumor, I don't know if it's true or not, about a new gym. As a senior citizen, I am personally impacted by the recent 7% property tax increase, a heavy burden for those of us on fixed incomes. It is devastating to know that while federal taxes are being reduced, our local leadership continues to increase ours without accountability. I was also disturbed by reports of disrespectful, disrespectful treatment directed to Mr. McGee by some board members. Hostility and infighting have no place in public service. The community expects collaboration, not conflict. The media attention brought upon our district by these behaviors and by Mr. HIBs is particular reflects arrogance and disregard, disregard for the public trust. If any board member is prioritizing personal gain or political agendas over our children's education, they should resign. In fact, it may be time to consider a complete restructuring of the board. Lastly, I would like to comment on the lack of professional dress within our schools. While spirit days can be lighthearted, routine appearances of jeans, sweatsuits, and even pajamas send the wrong message. We must evaluate our standards, fostering a culture of professionalism, pride, and excellence. In conclusion, I urge this board to take these concerns seriously, all the above. I am not alone in my feelings. Many in our community share my frustration. We demand accountability, transparency, and a renewed commitment to our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dada. I wrote down everything that you mentioned, and I wanted to, oh, about the lawsuits. So thank you for the opportunity to explain. So when someone, so the School Ethics Commission is not an organization that would discipline, per se, like, an employee or even a board member, like, nothing can really happen. They, they just evaluate what they're sent. It's not like they do, it's not a lawsuit. So whatever gets sent to them as a complaint, they look at that and they respond to that. And so when a complaint is made against a board member, between and among board members, from the public to the board, that is referred to our insurance, and the deductible is $5,000. So it's not a lawsuit, but there is a legal cost to that. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Mrs. Klein? I didn't hear any other questions, but I wrote it all. I wrote it down.
Good evening, everyone. I just have two questions. One would be on the line items, and the other one is going to be in reference to HIBs. So my question concerning the line items, when we have a line item on a budget, let's say it says, "Equipment," and you approve that line item, and let's say it's approved for $2 million, do you know what you're going to buy specifically for each line item? Because if you don't know, anybody can put something in that line item. I'm going to give you an example. So I've been told, the gym that Barbara referred to, it's a weight gym. It's not a gym that we think, it's a weight gym. And the weight gym cost a million dollars. And not all of you on the board knew about this weight gym. But because it said, "Equipment," maybe it was put in that budget, in that, on that line. How can that be? You cannot approve lines, people, and not know specifically what it is going to be spent on. You can't do it. It's wrong. So anybody can come up with anything and say, "This applies to furniture. Let's buy so-and-so and stick it in on that line." Unacceptable. It can't be done. You need to know specifically, what are you spending that money for? Number one. That was my question. Does everybody know specifically, every line that you approved, what the money is going for? First question. Second question. I read a lot. I don't even live in the state of New Jersey any longer, but I read a lot. I see you on Youtubes, I watch your meetings. And I was told, based on what I've read, that HIBs is suing the school district. If he is suing the school's district, why are you keep coming in every meeting and saying, "Let's bring him back"? That is a conflict of interest. I would never want someone working in my school district that's suing me. I don't understand this. I'm confused. Every time you meet, every time I watch you on YouTube, you make it a motion, "Let's bring him back." No. And if he's suing the school district, who's paying for his legal fees? Are we paying for his legal fees? Now, some of you would say, "Oh, she doesn't live in the district." You get federal money, and I'm federal. I can ask any question that I choose to, because you get my money. Does everybody understand that? You get federal funding, I get to the federal government, and I have every right to ask you a question. What are you doing with my money? Are you paying for his legal fees? That's the question. Thank you.
We can't talk about the superintendent at all. We're not paying his legal fees. He has his own attorney. And in terms of the line item budget, I mean, I would say this year at least, I wasn't on the board those other years. We did, you know, we got down to, like, granular level, I don't know about the previous years, but, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, so the process that we normally follow is, for each line item, if we have a detailed budget, so every dollar that makes up a specific line item, there are specific items that, you know, departments specifically for equipment will get quotes for. So there, there are specific details to every line item. Now, during the year, that's not to say, you know, you budget for a piece of equipment, don't end up getting it, or maybe a new need arises, and, you know, something changes. But every school district uses a set chart of accounts with specific descriptions, so you have to make sure whatever you're purchasing, you know, fits the category. And then as far as, the only thing that I'll mention about the, the other projects you brought up about the gyms, if you go back to our budget public hearing presentation from the 23, is this the 23, I think it was the 23, 24 budget, which was in April of 2023, we received close to $1 million in supplemental stabilization aid. That was just like a one shot of money, and it was actually, if I'm not mistaken, we didn't know about it until after we did our tentative budget. So we had to work on a plan to spend this money, knowing it wasn't going to recur. So there is, we had multiple meetings about this, but if you go back to that presentation, there is a specific slide that has details of the different projects that were budgeted for that.
Julie?
Yes. Yeah. Can I, can I just comment? What, what I noticed, that going back to that presentation and that weight room that was put in, I remember that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Rechter, that, that million, close to $1 million was for one and done things. In other words, it was for things that we could do, but not that we continue. Like, in other words, you wouldn't, you can't hire a teacher, because you're going to have to pay for them every year. But it was like a one and done kind of thing.
So yes, that was the recommendation at the time, because again, it was just, it wasn't recurring, so it, it's not like when we do the tax levy incentive and that money is added to our tax base. It was just, we were getting $1 million, but then the following year, our total state aid would either go back to what it was without that, or, you know.
Right.
Whatever the formula is.
Yeah, and I know, I know at the time, and I'm, I'm Yeah, and I know at the time, and I'm only one board member, I wanted to go to that meeting and somehow or other, it was approved at a board meeting, then it got changed. But something that always concerned me, you're right, our budget was crafted and then we got that million dollars. And what I never could really understand, and I'm just speaking for myself as a board member, I'm not speaking for the board, we had bleachers in our budget. And very easily, we could have taken those bleachers out of that, our crafted budget, and put it with the one and done, okay? Because that, the bleachers were one and done. So also too, I want to, I want to comment my own personal, again, speaking as a board member, with the line items. You know, just so everybody knows, you're on the board for three years and you just scratched the surface of understanding things. The budget is an enormous thing to understand. And, you know, Mrs. Rechter works very, very hard at it, tries to give us as much information as possible. But to speak to Mrs. Klein's comment about the line items, I know for myself as a board member, I don't know all those line items. And what, Connie, and I wish I did, and I'm telling you, it's hard to scratch at it to get all the particulars. The one thing that I know that happened last year was that there was a line item for furniture in every building of a classroom, part of what a project of the dream team was, to the tune of about $360,000 or $380,000. I know as a board member, had I known that was in the budget, I would have said, "Wait a minute. That's a great idea, but we don't have any money. People are losing their jobs. We got to put that on hold." Now, just so you know, we have a curriculum cycle. And in the curriculum cycle, when you're in math or English, there may be furniture or component to that. Remember now, this was a project that wasn't part of the curriculum cycle. So that's number one. So I didn't know that. I remember another time where some people shared with me about a consultant sitting down and talking with secretaries about what they do. And they, she spent days in our district. And when I inquired about it, well, it didn't go over a threshold in the line item to let the board know that it was even happening. It was all up and the up and up. I vote, I voted for the budget. There's a bunch of line items. There's things that could come out of those line items that I got to tell you, I don't know every line item and what everything's that's involved. But when I do hear things that come to my attention, I bring it forward. I bring it forward and ask what is happening. Many times in the past, and things change, the board was told when certain things were going to be happening or certain money was going to be spent. It seems that if it's in the budget and it's in the line item and I voted for it, I really don't have to know that it's happening because it's none of my business. At that point, I voted for it. I don't know if that answers your question, Mrs. Klein, but I definitely have to say for myself, I don't speak for everybody else. They may know a lot more than me. I don't know everything that's being spent in those line items. But I do, I do want to make a point that we do more and get, and I know Mrs. Bloom has mentioned this. We need to start right now talking about this budget. And I'm glad that Mrs. Guzempel is having a board retreat. That must happen. We must be, we be talking about the budget every, every, every board meeting.
Thank you.
Nicole LaNudi? Can I say something? Can I say something real quick about this?
Yeah.
I think I got a letter about the line item budget. And I want to make it clear that, in my opinion, when we do a retreat every year, we should all sit down as a group and do the line item budget. That was not done last year. That was not done this year. And I hope and pray, there's at least six of us that should be on the board next year. We are not doing what we should do. We don't sit down in a retreat as a board and go over the line item budget as a group. That didn't happen and it needs to happen for next year.
So the line? The line item budget was available at all the committee meetings and the detailed budget was emailed out well in advance. So if you feel like you didn't have enough time to review it, you do have a copy so you can review every single item and we could talk about that at retreats or committee meetings.
She's saying as a full board. I think she meant as a full board.
You did a great job with that, Janine.
No, I agree. I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying.
As a whole group, just like things in this budget, small groups, I like A, you like B. I can't convince you to go for A unless I meet with all of you and you have B. We just don't have enough back and forth. It's not your fault.
Right.
But we need to have a retreat every year.
Yeah. And the line item budget, just like for the, you know, so the public knows, just the general fund only, all the details is over 150 pages. So, you know, you guys have it and like, if you want to target certain, certain areas at different committee meetings or different, you know, points throughout the year.
That's what we can be doing. Yeah, I mean, things are changing. I think, it sounds like this year, we got way more information than you did last year, for sure. Nicole LaNudi?
Sorry. I've been beaten to death. I just think it's also important to keep in mind, what's the role of a board member, right? We don't run the district, right? We are here to ensure the district is run well. Our biggest job is to hire a superintendent to make policy, and that's pretty much it, right? We don't run the district. That's, I mean, that's in the ethics. If we try to administer the district, we actually are, they're committing an ethics violation. So that's, just keep in context what the role of a board member is.
Well, the budget is the board's budget, I think, is why you might be hearing some murmuring. It's the board's budget. And we, it's not an ethics violation to talk about the budget. I think that...
No, his point is about administering the school district, I think, which a board member can't administer the school district. The budget is the board's budget. I don't know if the two points got conflated when you said it, but that's the, that's the answer.
Thanks, sorry. So much to argue with. In, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to Scott making a motion about bringing Hibbs back. It's, I think she had asked why he keeps doing that. And I think it's because Scott knows that he was unlawfully put on leave. At this point, it's not, well, did they not invoke the doctrine of necessity unlawfully? So back into my, that's about to be my point. So lawfully, whether you like him, don't like him, it doesn't matter. The question comes that we had, no, it doesn't matter. The question is now, was it done legally? Was it done lawfully? Was it done ethically? It could have been him, it could have been her, it could have been anybody. The question is, was it done legally and ethically? And now we are approving the law firm that allowed it to happen unlawfully. By approving a law firm that allowed unlawful things to happen, isn't that unethically done in itself? Could this happen in other situations where the attorney should have stepped in and said, "No, we can't invoke the doctrine of necessity. This isn't allowed right now." What other type of situations could this happen in? Whether it's lawful or legal, I should say, to have the same attorney do both jobs, as Ms. Baker had said, it might be legal. Is it right at this point? We do have a lot of lawsuits. It costs us a lot of money. We don't have the money. We have people losing their jobs. So whether it's legal or not, is it the right decision? And can we start to move into making lawful and ethical decisions that aren't going to cost us more money that we don't have? I wish there was another board member that can explain that, along with the bleachers. With the way things are going right now, again, legally and ethically and lawsuits, we don't have that money. We need to start preventing. I was really happy to hear that Julie said that everybody was starting to work together. Hopefully, that will eliminate some of that money. Another issue or question that I have is, a couple years ago, at a board meeting, I had asked if there was any, in the sights of hiring in district BCVAs and RBTs. And Dr. Hibbs said that that was the plan. He said that in a meeting. Is that still the plan? Every year, you're approving DeNovi for millions of dollars. Connie had said something to Ms. Miller about, is there a cap on somebody working in the summer exceeds something? Is there a cap on how much we're paying DeNovi every year for services? It is well-known through insurance companies, through parents, that he is known for billing for hours that he doesn't provide. Another letter from Brett DeNovi himself just went out to all employees stating that there is another fraud case against them for billing for hours they didn't provide. Does anybody have the job of combing through his hours, line by line, to know if we actually got those hours? And they're only consult hours. DeNovi, from what I'm told, from admin and DeNovi staff, they don't provide therapy hours, they provide consult. They're getting paid $55 an hour, $75 an hour, $116 an hour for consult. Our staff doesn't get paid that. They get paid $15 an hour. Can we look into bringing on staff BCVAs and RBTs that we are not paying $3.5 million a year to? It's not needed. There's been so many, it was 3.5. I asked last year, that number came directly from you, that we paid 3.5 million last year. I actually went back to a board meeting that it was said, and that Dr. Hibbs said that it was on the table to bring, to phase them out. I wanted to make sure I wasn't misquoting anything, so I did go back and re-watch that. There's been multiple staff members. Has anybody went to assistants or teachers and asked what DeNovi does in the buildings? Specifically, elementary school, middle school, there's actually two people in this room right now that have attested, to me at least, that they do absolutely nothing, that they've had problems with them, that they don't do their job, and they're getting paid 100-something dollars an hour. It's, I wish more people would speak up. And actually, somebody the other day, an assistant in an elementary school, has multiple run-ins and complaints over this staff, over DeNovi staff. I would really like, before you approve them, to maybe go to staff and ask if it's necessary to spend that much hourly wage on them and not our own staff.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Oliverte, you just said that it's the board's job to make sure the schools are run correctly. That's in the preview. You're doing a horrible job. Just to let you know, I knew you guys were working towards something, but over the last few years during your term, it's not all been sunshine and rainbows, obviously. I just want to bring up something. Board members not paying their property taxes. This really bothers me because you're a public official voting every meeting to spend tax dollars. And it's really concerning that you can go on a township website, which is public, and see that board members are behind multiple quarters on their property taxes. It's, I don't think I'd have an issue if it was your water bill, you don't want to take a shower, that's fine, your cell phone bill, whatever, but you're a public official not paying your property taxes? This is a severe issue. If you're not going to pay your taxes, then abstain on voting on bills to spend the tax money. Please. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to clarify something. So thank you so much for your concern over, over the people that lost their benefits. I just want to clear up. So when we got notification that 59 of our people would be losing their benefits, I did send an email out to those people and just told them to connect with the HR specialist. She was, she's our benefit specialist. She's excellent. And she took the time with everybody. She sent letters. It is dependent. It doesn't matter how many years you're here. It's dependent on when you hired. Everybody has different hire dates. So there is no one answer for, you know, I might have my benefits expire June 30th, somebody else might have July 30th, somebody else might have August 30th. So she made it, I had them reach out to her and she was phenomenal in getting back to them, making sure they knew. And then some people had their benefits extended. You were able to extend them for a little bit over the summer, for however long you weren't covered. If you were covered till the end of August, you were okay. If you were not, they were able to extend them before they got COVID notifications. So I do appreciate you asking about that and your concern over it. So we did reach out to them and they are aware of that. And they've all been contacted now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Baker. I heard you say that, you know, as a board member in your three-year term, you can sort of barely scratch the surface of understanding the budget and how the impact the district. On the agenda this evening, under negotiations is, I guess it's a resolution to approve a five-year contract. Since the purview of a board member is typically a three-year term, does, do you or any other board members have concern with approving contracts that extend?
Ms. Schechter, please address your comments to me.
Sure, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If there, or any other board members, if they have any concerns with approving a five-year contract, which is outside the term of any single board member. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone want to respond to? I don't think we can respond.
No, that was something that, obviously, would be an executive session discussion. But, so they can't respond right now.
Randy Ford? I have two more cards, too. I have Hannah, and I think it says Mrs. Watson, but for the second, for the second session.
Randy Ford, I just had three quick questions. On this million-dollar gym, I heard all the back and forth, but I still don't know that I know what this actually is. Is it like a gym, like a gymnasium, a weight room? That we received a million dollars? Where did the million dollars come from? Is it tax? Is it grant? Is it fundraising, et cetera? So just, there's like 10 minutes of conversation about it, but I still don't know where it was in the budget, when it was approved, how old it was. So if there's any more clarity you can provide, that would be awesome. Just some of the increases in the professional services, health, legal, benefits, DeNovi. Just want to know, are all of those line items and the increases, whether it's 15%, 9%, 12%, I think was in the agenda, are all of those budgeted in the budget that was approved? That's the second question. And then the third and final question is P1, the memo of understanding. My only question would be, from a transparency perspective, and I don't know how long this memo of understanding is, but can you provide, prior to voting on it, what the proposed memo is, or immediately after it's voted on, if it's approved? Either read it in its entirety or somebody give a really specific summary of what we're talking about? Because I know a huge portion of the budget is salary and benefits, so I'm assuming that this is going to have, you know, an impact, right? So just, I can Oprah it tomorrow or tonight, I won't get it until August. I just, if you can, you know, give some level of specificity as to what's being approved so we all know in the public tonight, that would be great. So thank you very much.
Okay, let's just clear up the gym because I don't want people talking, saying we have a million-dollar gym. We do not. I wasn't on the board when that million dollars came to the board, so I'll let Janine address that. But what they're talking about is the Pride Pavilion, Randy. I don't know if you've seen that, like, when you go to the football field on the right, it used to be our facility's, like, garage. And now it's called the Pride Pavilion. And they put weights in there, they painted it, they took, they changed the walls and stuff. I think the number I heard was, was a rumor, was like $100,000, but I don't really know. I'll let Janine refer to that, like, address it. But that's what they're talking about, the Pride Pavilion. Instead of it being a facility's garage, it's now a workout gym for football, for the football kids. Professional services increases, I'm not sure what you're referring to unless you mean the flat commission, the commission on the insurance. It's 1.5%. Yeah. Can you address that?
I think we have a couple of things on the agenda, but the, we just have to approve the rates, the insurance rates for next year. They are in the budget because we do get that information ahead of time.
And then the P1, I think you said memo, but I think you mean the MOA. You mean the MOA?
Yeah, memo of understanding.
Yeah, go ahead.
Randy, until, once it's approved or ratified by the board, if it is ratified by the board, you're obviously entitled to a copy of it through a you're obviously entitled to a copy of it through opere, as you know. I mean, if the board wants to read it aloud after, that would be up to the board. But until it's approved, it's not something that's publicly disclosable.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public? Oh, the gym. Do we know how much the gym, the Pride Pavilion actually costs?
So, I'm, I'm referring back to the presentation that I was talking about that was in the 23-24 budget. So, it was, we received $996,000. It was additional state aid. So, it was just state aid that came for one year, one year only. And we had various projects in there. Like I said, it was a whole slide in our presentation, but we replaced sound systems, we did painting, we did outside improvements, mostly where we were having issues with overgrown trees and blocked walkways and things like that. We had the stadium pavilion, which Julie was just referencing, moving, that also consisted of moving the maintenance department out to an area of the school that was a little safer, so we don't have vehicles going back and forth. There was also some new equipment in the adaptive gym that we use in the 910 side of the high school. There was some improvements in the elementary schools. And I think that's it. But like I said, there's a slide with, with all the budgeted amounts for that year.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to approve items 1 through 4 under report of the superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, that's an all in. I'm having a brain fart. Roll call, please. Mrs. Hartong? Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried, right? Okay. Motion to approve, and I know we probably have discussion on this, but motion to approve for second reading, item number one under policy, which is the AI policy.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? I forgot to do discussion. I forgot to do discussion on the superintendent items. Did we have? Go ahead, Carol.
A quick question on the policy. Do we have a regulation that goes with this? Is there a Strauss-Esmay regulation that accompanies this, or no?
Mr. Distillio?
Regulation is still being developed after this policy. We're still working throughout that, through over the summer, because we want to also go to the AI summit and get the latest and greatest information.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for getting back to me on my question about the training aspects of it. That was my concern. We have a policy saying we train people, and we're working to train them, so I'm glad to hear that that's being developed. So, thanks for getting back to me.
Also, did you all get that presentation I sent you from East Brunswick Schools for their AI? I forwarded, I went to, which one was that? Oh, the AI Summit that they had at Mercer County College. And our own Kathy Krasnowski was there, and I talked to her about it. I mentioned it at the last meeting, and I forwarded her presentation. I realize I did not actually send it to you, to all of your administrators, so I'll share that. But they did, the guy's name is Herb Pizzuto. He did an immense amount of community work before they wrote that and implemented that. They use AI, they provide AI tools in their district, they prohibit it in elementary school, but they are teaching students how to use it, and they have very specific, thorough implementation. I'm actually voting no on this tonight, just not for any other reason, other than I just feel like there's a lot more that needs to go into a policy about AI use than we have here. So, please look at that presentation. I would love to even have him come in and consult. He does do that. So, just wanted to mention that. If you didn't get that in your inbox and you want it, well, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Hartong?
No.
Ms. Kuzempel?
No.
Did that pass? It did pass. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Under human resources, oh, excuse me, under student activities and communication, have a motion to approve items 1 and 2, homeless charter and foster students for May and June. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, under human resources, motion to approve items 1 through 35.
Motion.
Ralph motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Carol, second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Ms. Baker.
Under number one, position changes, I just want to make a comment that, for myself as a board member, I did not see that document until the board agenda came out on Friday night. The reason why I say that is because, as a board member, basically, we're told there's going to be X amount of people that are going to lose their job or get rest, or going to be non-renewed. So, when I saw this, it was after, I'll tell you the story. On Sunday, right before school was going to close, my granddaughter's writing her thank you and a little gift she has for her teachers, and I'm reading her card to her gifted and talented teacher in the Elements, and she's saying, "Good luck in fifth grade. I hope you like it." I said, "Maddo, what's this about?" "Oh, she's not coming back. She's going to Herfield." So, I want to thank Gretchen Gerber. I raised some questions about the Elements program. The fact, and let me give you some history on this. Probably back around 2014, we went from one gifted and talented teacher in every school to one gifted and talented teacher for every two schools. I can't talk that? Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. So, all right, let me, let me tell you what I'm going to do on this one. Okay. All right. I also noticed on number eight and number 25, I just kind of noticed this recently, it appears that there's someone that resigned is also listed for a co-curricular position for $2,800. So, I, I think somehow we ought to correct that. We shouldn't be voting on that tonight.
I'm not sure you're referring to, but...
Okay. Under co-curricular...
These employees should be discussed in executive session.
Oh, okay. Well, well, what do we do at this point?
You just don't vote, don't vote, and, I mean, I don't have any, there's nothing that can be discussed right now.
Anything else, Connie? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Okay. Under number one, I'm going to vote no from not eliminating the elementary gifted and talented teacher. I'm going to abstain on number eight, and I'm going to abstain on number 25. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy? Oops, sorry. Ms. Chilla?
I am going to abstain on number 16, because I am conflicted on the WTEA, so I think I have to abstain from the entire thing. So, I'll just abstain on number 16, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Hartong?
I am going to abstain on number 16, and I'm going to go, uh, no on number eight.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Everything carried there?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve items 1 through 74 under finance? Ralph? Second. Scott? Any discussion?
Yeah.
Scott?
Uh, on 26 and 27, which is the solicitor and the negotiation services, I'm going to vote yes to that with the understanding that we're going to, for the time being, get a different solicitor and a different negotiator until we amend the policy.
Yes. Related to the policy discussion earlier, we have a plan for that.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes. Thank you. Also, you guys, I'm sorry, it, number 28 was deleted, I just saw, I don't know what that was, but to amend my motion, it's 1 through 27 and 29 through 74. Sorry about that. Any other comments?
Um, just on number 26 and 27 and number 49, I'll be voting no. 26 and 27, I'm voting no, because we don't have a policy ironed out yet and firm, so I feel that I can't vote on 26 and 27, because I feel like we're still up in the air with our own policy, and I think that would be conflicting for me to vote on that, in my, in my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call. Mrs. Bloom?
No on 49, yes on everything else.
Ms. Chilla?
No to, no to 26, 27, and 49, and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Hartong?
No to 26, 27, 49, and yes to everything else.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
No to 49, yes to the rest.
Everything passed? Ralph said yes. Okay. Under special education, items 1 through 5, can I have a motion to approve items 1 through 5? Motion. Second.
Second.
Ms. Bloom? Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker? Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Thank you. Under negotiations, motion to approve item number one.
Motion.
Second. Carol, second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Scott?
First, I got something that Elaine asked me to read, so, so that's, I'm reading this on behalf of Elaine Clancy. She says, "I apologize that I could not be here tonight due to personal reasons, although I have always valued our support staff, especially our classroom aides who are underpaid. However, this MOA should not be approved, as it is a long-term contract. It's not fiduciary, being fiduciary responsible with the issue of less and less coming from the state. We already are asking the residents of Washington Township for over a 7% tax increase this year, putting the burden on our taxpayers. We already know how this budget has affected our school community and resulted in cuts at all levels of employees. I implore, implore the board to vote no on this MOA and renegotiate with, renegotiate a contract with the whole board having input." That was from Elaine. I also have my own comments.
Any, go ahead.
Yeah. So, I have to be careful what I say here, because it's not a ratified document, but first, I just want to say, I do appreciate all the hard work of all the support staff in the district. I mean, your hard work makes this district run. I do have concerns about this contract. Again, I can't bring specifics, but one, I'm concerned about the length of time obligating future boards and somewhat tying their hands, and also the financial aspects of it. I have concerns over that. One thing I have to ask, Ari, if I can bring up here.
Does anyone else have comments?
We were looking at rehiring a lot of our support staff. I couldn't believe that we had one hire who had been here since 2003, and the amount of money that person's making this year, if it stays as it is, is $17.54. Now, they've been here since 2003, their longevity is about $600. I know that some people don't like the five-year contract, but with everything else that's going on, you have to realize that the amount that was actually budgeted for the support staff this year, if it had stayed like it was, the support staff specifically, our assistants, would be getting pennies. Based on this, I'm going to have a leap of faith, and I'm going to vote yes when, when we vote on it.
I'll make a quick comment. So, I think I've asked for this for the past year, and I've said it publicly a lot. I asked for data, because I wanted to make sure that whatever was negotiated would actually be commensurate with the market. So, that's what I asked for. I didn't get that information in terms of market data to ensure that, and I'm going to be very careful with my words, to ensure that one of the groups that frequently comes to the podium, rightfully so, and talks about not being at market and being underpaid, which I couldn't agree more. I'm not convinced that this actually does that. So, I'm voting no for very different reasons, because I feel like the way it was constructed, that it should have been just constructed differently to ensure that those, that group of people was brought up to market, the market data, that I wasn't provided, and I've asked several times to be provided, and I was not given any information about it at all. And this was asked several times. So, if it, if it existed, if it existed, I don't have it, and I asked for it. So, I just want to let you know, that's the reason why I do think that the group, and I think you know who I'm talking about, absolutely needs to be brought up to the market, but I don't have that information of where that market is. And when I look at this and I analyze it, I personally don't believe that that does that. That's my own opinion. I don't. So, I just want to let you know the reason why I'm voting no is probably different, maybe, than others that are, but that's my reason why. I wasn't given the information. I asked for it. I didn't get it. So, I just want to let you know, reason why, I'm not devaluing what you do, because it's actually quite the opposite. So, I just want to let you know the reason why.
I have one more comment.
Yes.
So, my other concern just is that we haven't received information back from the state about the extraordinary aid package. Because of that, I, I think we should table this until we have that information back. The tax levy.
You the tax levy application?
Tax levy, yes. So, it's a comment. Can I make a motion to do that?
Well, we already, we already have a motion and a second, Ari, to, we're in discussion.
Am I able to make a motion to table it, though?
We have to finish it. My little book from NJ SBA. Also, I want to make, I need to correct, item forty-nine did not pass, which was Brett Danovi and Associates, and I don't, I think that is, well, I don't know that that's claps, but go ahead, Annette.
So, the board-certified behavior analysts are within that item, so as we open up, yes, we have zero behavior services, so I just want the Board to be aware. Beyond that, without putting the district in any kind of jeopardy, that is exceptionally concerning in terms of compliance.
What, wait, I want to know, okay.
Are we able to give them a month-to-month contract, rather than for a year?
So I, and I shared this in a confidential memo to the Board, the items that come under Special Education are related to specific students in the district, so we use, we use agency services to support the services we provide within our own staff, and that is in many different areas, behavior services included, could be health services, nursing services, OT, things that supplement what we already have. Some of those agencies are exclusive, they're specialized in what they do. In this particular case, yes, that agency is all of the behavior services that we have in the district.
Those youngsters, youngsters aren't being serviced then this summer.
After, I got, I got a question.
Yeah.
After we vote, after we finish the motion that we're finished with, can someone or myself make a motion to recast number forty-nine under?
Yes.
Financing facilities, okay.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I received confirmation that I can make a motion to table this matter, I'd like to table it until we get that information back from the state, so.
So then, right now, we're voting to table?
I need a second, I would need a second.
Oh, okay, does he have a second? What if he doesn't get a second? Okay, then we, then that doesn't go anywhere, so we're voting on the item. So we're voting on the original motion, which is to approve the ratification of the MOA. Roll call.
Mrs. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Hartong?
Epstein.
Mr. LaLiberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, do you want to make a motion to revisit number forty-nine under Finance? That motion carried, by the way.
Congratulations. I'd like to make a motion to recast the vote for financing facilities N, number forty-nine, and let me get more specific resolution for Brett Danovian Associates LLC.
Second.
For a second, okay. Any discussion?
Yes, I think we have to have discussion.
Absolutely.
Does this have to be a whole-year contract?
Yes, the professional service contracts are for a year.
Can there be a cap on the amount of money paid to this vendor? Because I think, I mean, I'll just speak for myself, I voted no just because of the overall expense, I trust that, Annette, I'm gonna vote yes now, because I can see your frustration, and I, and I trust your decisions, but I just think this is kind of maybe something that we definitely need to talk about in terms of cutting back significantly with this vendor going forward, but I don't, but I'm a yes, I'll be a yes. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Hold on a second. If we approve it now, can we talk about moving forward, empowering our own aides, and training our own aides, and making them being able to become our Danovi?
So our own assistants are trained, we have an incredible amount of assistants in this district, the agency provides board-certified behavior analysts to the district, there are supportive program, supportive people within that agency, we have scaled back an incredible amount of money this year. So, I can tell you, yes, the answer is yes, we can absolutely look in terms of fading what we use the agency for, there is zero doubt in my mind that we need board-certified behavior analysts in this district.
Can we bring in, or like, can we in-house do it?
We can, we can explore all of that.
Okay.
But we have students walking through the door.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, if we approve it now, would that be something that you're open to discuss?
Yeah, we, we always train our own assistants, and they, they're just doing different jobs, is the best way to say it.
I mean, I'm just, because we used to have B.A.G.L.s. We used to have B.A.G.L. specialists, B.C.A.s, we used to. We did, that one woman who was super nice. Yes.
I have it on the list for the retreat, and I'm moving it up in the priority list for the retreat.
I don't have a problem approving forty-nine, because that's what we need for right now, but I want to be able to have a conversation of providing our own people.
I agree, I want a supportive that, that's important to me, but I also hope that we can look into getting our own B.C.A.B.s, I think that that's important to the district, but I'll vote yes, too.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
No.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, any items of new business? Think we have enough business? Okay. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lou Randazzo?
Good evening, my name is Lou Randazzo, I'm a field representative from the New Jersey Education Association. First to the Board is Avani, thank you for ratifying the agreement between the support staff and the district, we appreciate it. It's very disappointing, though, to have people vote no, to be very honest, right? Just in light of everything the district has gone through, and the number of cuts that the staff had to bear, and the way in which it was done, right, that we heard not just me say it at the last meeting, but countless staff, that they waited, someone even tonight, weeks to find out what their fate would be, if they would be brought back, and the number of resignations on the agenda. One of them says a verbal resignation, because your employees have lost faith in the district. I go back to the agenda, thirty-something, one of the resignations, because someone that was an experienced teacher, that was told, hey, you're not renewed like everybody, went elsewhere, and wasn't required to give the district any notice, and you have verbal resignation, that's what your employees think of you, as a body, just, not the Board, but as the district, and that's where you are, and I think voting no on the agreement, you know, though it's your right to do so, it's very disappointing for the staff to hear that, and that's the state of your schools. In terms of special services, WTA, the President's right here, I'm sitting with him, and on behalf of them, we would love to support and represent formerly the BCBAs, so if you want to give us voluntary recognition at the expiration of this Danovi deal, we'll be happy to bring them into our bargaining unit. The same goes for the assistants, or whatever you want to call them, that Danovi provides. I respectfully disagree, they do a different job, think they're doing our bargaining at work, and now that the contract is ratified by both of the parties, if you are paying our folks for the RBT certification, the coursework and all, which is in the agreement, then the support staff will be happy to do that part of the work as well. So, we'll be happy to accept voluntary recognition for any of those job categories for each of the two associations. I believe that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sean Lindsay?
I just got a couple comments, I'm gonna be the, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here, what happens if that stabilization aid doesn't get approved? What are you gonna do? Contract's ratified, but now, we're gambling with this now. It's up to the state to decide if we get it or not, so if we don't get it, how are you gonna look these people in the eye and tell them something else has to happen if we don't get it? You just, you're gambling right now. Granted, everybody likes to have a gambling, gambling, you know, thing, like, hey, I think I can get it, I think I can win. What if we don't? You're gonna stand there and look at these people in the eye and say, oh, sorry, we didn't get the money, you're screwed. There you go. Another point I want to make is that, everybody's like, oh, let the pass go, let the pass go, well, here's the problem, people keep bringing up the pass, so I'm gonna bring it up now. Can we please stop talking about the bleachers, stop talking about the rocks, stop talking about these one-time, and somebody actually asked me to explain this, so I'm gonna try the best I can. I was a former Board member, I was here when some of these things got approved. Understand, when this money came in, it was explained to me very detailed by Mrs. Wechter, this was a one-time cash infusion, this was not something that was an ongoing recurring theme every year that we could put into the budget. When this money was allocated, we could only do projects, we could not hire staff. You can only do one thing with this, which was projects. So what are we gonna do? We're gonna hire you for a year, and then guess what? You don't have a job next year, because that money is no longer in the budget. It was a one-time infusion, so anybody who's still confused about that, that's the simplest terms that I can explain, is that you had money come in one time, you can only use it for projects, you could not use it for staff. So that's the rectification on that, if I said that right, whatever, anyway, that's what that was used for. Last comment I'm gonna make is, is there a legal reason, maybe, I don't know if you're gonna answer it or not, but I want to ask it, is there a legal reason why our superintendent, that we are paying to stay at home, why he is not allowed to do his job? I just want to know. I saw, I sat up here and watched that man sit in that chair, and the recognition and the admiration that man received from so many people in this audience should speak volumes about how much this man really tried to change this district for the better, regardless of what you think about him as a person, I could care less. Please don't disrespect me, I let the other people talk, don't disrespect me by talking over me, please. So here's my question, you don't let him come back, and then you try to throw a second superintendent under a $200,000 when we didn't have the money for it, so what was the goal there? I forgot, that's right, you cut out the Director of Counseling, and you cut out the B&amp;G Supervisor, was that the way to make the money for that supervisor, or for that superintendent to come in? Anybody want to answer that? Probably not, because you won't. Bottom line is this, we don't have a captain at the ship, no offense to you, Ms. Miller, you have so many hats, I don't know how you're doing it. I commend you for stepping up and doing it, you shouldn't have to. We have a paid superintendent who is sitting at home doing nothing, and we're paying him to sit on his butt and do nothing when he should be up there handling the district as he should. But no, there are personal feelings about, oh, I don't like the guy, I don't like the way he did this, I don't like the way he speaks, I don't like his beard. Who gives two rats what? The man is here to do a job, we hired him to do a job. I don't care if you like him, I don't care if you hate him, what he was doing for this district was trying to move it forward and get it better. Some people don't want to see it, maybe you're blind, but when you sit up at that dais, you shouldn't care what people think, it's about your actions, and that man was trying to do actions that were doing improvements in this school district. You might not have liked everything he did, I didn't, but the majority of what he was trying to do was trying to make this district better, and rather than all this personal stuff, just hire the man back, we're paying him, why is he not working? If this was the private sector, huh, yeah, I'd love to see somebody try to pull this in the private sector, you'd be going out faster than crap through a goose. So please, bring the superintendent back that we hired to do his job. Thank you.
I think you, you mentioned stabilization aid, but I think you meant, we have stabilization aid, I think you meant the county, the tax levy. Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, I just, I want to speak to my motion. No, 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 I want to speak to my motion, so, I put those specific positions on the floor because I thought that they could be absorbed by administrators who have exorbitant salaries already, and I thought that that work could be absorbed, so, part of the reason I did that was because we gave some money to the health aides, and if we would have had the ability to cut all four positions, we would have been able to give, ooh, excuse me, just had some water, we would, we would have been able to give more money to either aides or some of the teachers that were being cut. So, there's a difference in priority with where we think the money should go, so I respect everyone's opinion, who wants to allocate money toward the top, I prefer to allocate it toward the bottom, because without those people, there are no leaders, so, we're asking, again, I say this, and I say it often, and I'm kind of beating a dead horse here, but we can't ask the taxpayer to do more, we're asking them to give more, and they're getting less services in return, we're asking the support staff to do more with less, we're asking the teachers to do more with less, we're asking some of the frontline supervision to do more with less. I think it's right to ask the central administration to do more with less, that's my personal opinion, that's why those motions were put on the floor, so, there's your explanation.
Also wanted to, I didn't say this at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to clarify, too, with public comment, and this isn't in response to any particular person, but the microphone is not the place to talk about specific people or disparage people and things like that, I'm not saying you did that, Sean, but I was talking to Ms. Hartong, I did not, I forgot to say that in the beginning. That said, I'm not allowed to stop someone who's doing that, I just want everyone to know that, because when people get up and say things, I'll say to Ari, can I, can I stop? And I'm not allowed to, so it's an individual's decision what they say, I think it's probably best to stay away from personal attacks, but that said, I can't stop someone who makes the decision as an adult to do that, sadly. Heather Whitcraft.
Hi, Heather. Hi, Heather Whitcraft. Am I talking into it? Okay, thanks. I can't get closer, that's weird. Yeah, you're there. All right, so somebody had asked me to ask this, somebody that had been non-renewed, but they had good performance and good summative, they're effective in their positions, but then there are open positions on the same, I guess, level that they were, like, just another teacher position, but when they were non-renewed, these positions were not offered to them, and they were kind of wondering, like, were there anybody that, was there anybody that was non-renewed, offered any of the open positions that are listed online before opening them to the public? And, one thing, I didn't put on my card, but it was after you guys were talking about Danovi and everything else, there are other services that offer besides being able to train people in-house. While you're going through that, Crest does offer that service, and I know Crest is contracted with Washington Township, they have BCBAs, I don't know if they cost more or less, but, and as far as market value, there is a neighboring district that starts their powers off at 26,000, when there's people that were here for 22 years only making 22,000, and all those contracts are, they're, I know that contract's available online, you know, but that is all. Thanks. Thanks.
Regarding, every person has a specific situation, so I can't answer, I don't think anyone up here could really answer what your first question you had, but I would encourage that person to reach out to their supervisor to ask that question, and apply for the jobs that are, they have to reapply for jobs. Hannah, Hannah Maraz.
I just want to say that we are focusing on the wrong thing here. Why are we arguing over Hibbs and his leave, and what we should be focusing on is the children? That is why you are all here for. The definition of a school is an institution for education for children. Maybe this will remind you of what you are here for. How dare some of you sit up there and argue with board members? This isn't reality TV. My grandmother, Eileen Abbott, would be rolling in her grave. How dare you converse in a building named after her while going against everything she stood for? Maybe most discussions here are about the budget because it's a serious problem that needs to be solved. I've come to board meetings, and times and times again, all I hear is arguing. Is this really the example you want to set for the children? There's only one board member I see who listens to what I'm saying, that should never be the case.
Thank you, Hannah. Mrs. Watson?
Some children...
Can you get closer?
Yes, lottery. Lottery is for preschool, correct?
Right now, it's a lottery, but in a couple, once we get more funding and spaces, we have to have actual sites to put the students, so they give you time where you have to do a lottery because you can't place all the kids. And then, over time, you get to what's called your universal number, and then the lottery goes away, and everybody just gets it.
Okay, but the problem is, is you're picking and choosing. And technically, yes, but a lottery is like me getting a lottery to hit the million dollars. Some children are going to get lost in that, and that's not what a public education is about. It's not a gamble. It is direct. And all of the children in this district, and hopefully the state, and possibly the world, can get at least the opportunity to get a good start, so that they can improve. And you're arguing about all these things, but you're not getting it. Discipline is an issue because if you place a kid out, they're no longer learning. And from that list, that's a lot of children not learning. Now, I don't know, I don't have the exact numbers, but it should start in preschool, it shouldn't be a lottery, because a lot of people in Washington Township are millionaires. So for some, some of the people here are millionaires. And yes, they are, trust me. But a lot of people are what I call hard-working class people, and they're what I call house-rich, but technically, they're not financially rich. But because they have a house in Washington Township, that's what makes them really rich. And so, and then you have other people who are struggling every day to put food on the table, and their hope is that you will make sure that from preschool to high school, their kids can compete in a real competition society. Like I said, to get into certain corporations, you have to have an advanced degree in math and science. Just Blackstone, right? He won't even look at you unless you have a degree, advanced degrees. And you can't get to that level if you can't even get preschool, you can't even get kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth, all the way up. Once you fall behind, you're all the way behind. I had great teachers, I was academically talented, and I'm telling you, some of those trillionite men in Pennsylvania will say, an education is everything. Today, on these Facebook pages, they say, no, you don't need an education to become a millionaire. That's true for some people, but most people have to work hard, they have to study hard. The reason why they are in this district is because their parents came here so that they could have a quality education. What is wrong with that? Why are you arguing over certain things when you should be arguing about, we need to involve all the kids in? And it was a young little guy, he was talking about playing golf. He understands if you play golf, now you're socializing with certain people who can get you an opportunity to become successful in the career that you choose. And so I don't know why you're taking away some of their programs because they do need it. Many of them doesn't even require a lot of money, and we're wasting a lot of money on things we really don't even need. But we do need an education for all the children, all of them, not just some. Especially the poor children and African-American children, who for many reasons are getting way left behind. And you have billboards all over stating that they can't even do the math, that at my grade level, 30, 40 years ago, they can't even compete with what I learned back then. And it has been trending for generations. Some of these kids, you may be passing, but they're not learning, and they're not receiving what they need to compete in the real world.
That's it. Thank you. Randy Ford?
Just three, I guess, two questions and a recommendation. The first question or ask is around the MOA, it has been voted on. I know I can Oprah it, if there's a way that someone can explain high level or in as specific as possible what was voted on, so we can understand the costs and where everything's going. Again, if I Oprah it, I'm not going to have it anytime soon. So that's just my first renewed question. The second question is, I think at one of the meetings, you extended or hired conflict counsel through 6:30, and you're probably not going to have another meeting until after 6:30, so just curious as to what happens with that counsel? Does his contract expire? Does it go month to month? I don't know, so that's my question. And then just, from a recommendation, and I'll sort of point this to Ms. Kuzempel, but it's really about other board members. I feel like some on this board get dangerously close to talking about personnel when they shouldn't. So when you do this retreat, I would ask that maybe you have a refresher. I have the, my son is taught by the woman that Ms. Baker referred to earlier. So she's awesome, and it's a shame that Elements got cut, and it's great, though, that she'll be able to stay within the district. Again, you let it go a little too long before cutting it back, so maybe proactively, that way you're protecting the personnel and the people. So then, maybe Mr. Randazzo, when he gets to the microphone or other people, can say, hey, you know, members, teachers, support staff, they're proud to be in this district. So it's just a concern, I know it's not the biggest concern, but there are laws and there's rules that protect personnel, and I think we should just, you know, make it a point to put that at the forefront. So thank you.
Could, may I just jump in about Elements?
Gretchen, yeah, could you talk a little bit about Elements?
Elements is not cut, we made a reduction in one of the teachers. So the program is still going to run, it's still going to look exactly the same. We just, we're able to work our schedules creatively to be able to service our students differently.
For the conflict council, it's a point, you know, that that runs through June 30th. Steve, the last thing that you mentioned was, when you updated us, was that everything was going to be done by the 30th. So I don't know, I don't know. I wish, I wish I could explain why it was so delayed.
I recall ever saying that, but...
Oh, sorry. The interviews were going to be done, I thought.
The investigation is ongoing, I can't, I can't discuss anything other than that.
You shouldn't go any further than that. The concern was, I think that the conflict council's contract expires on June 30th, is that after? So he could continue to do work, the board will have to retroactively approve it at a later date, obviously. That's something, Steve, you and I could talk about that later.
Could we just vote as a board to extend it one month, so that we'll have another meeting? You know, that'll carry us through to the July meeting?
Again, there'd have to be a contract that you guys approve, though. I'd have to look, I don't even know what the contract says, to be honest. I'm taking your word that it says it expires June 30th? Was it for a period, or how long was it for? Do any of you know, offhand? You'd have to take a look at that to be better able to speak on it.
In terms of the MOA, I mean, the version that I, it needs to be Oprah'd, but at the same time, it needs to be explained. So when, what you're going to see when you Oprah it is, anything that's initialled by all the parties is the change. But it's so much information, I don't know how we could read it and explain all of that right now. So James Masadi?
All right, am I eating the microphone enough? All right, good evening, thank you, James Masadi. Two questions for the board, and then I have a couple of comments. At the May 20th meeting that was canceled, Dr. Bandlow from School Board Association was supposed to come to talk about board goals. I haven't seen that come back up on any future agenda items yet, so I was just curious if that's been rescheduled, when it's going to be scheduled for. We're already going into July, so it seems very late to be starting that process, but I was looking back, it looks like we haven't had board goals since the 23, 24 school year, so would just be very interested to kind of get an update for that. The other one was, Ms. Baker at least mentioned something about Friday night getting the agenda. Since I've been paying attention, this is the largest agenda I've come across, there were 102 attachments and 747 pages. So we've heard from other members of the public about the board needing to be informed. I just am curious, what is the timeline that you guys actually started to receive, the 747 pages of the items that you all voted on tonight, in order to be able to have enough time to review all of that? Because that seems pretty heavy to me, and you guys are volunteers, many of you have jobs outside of this, so I just don't know, like, how do we control what's getting onto the budget to make sure it's manageable for everybody to make informed decisions? So I'd love for some insight there. Hearing about the board retreat, a couple of items, for me as well, I'd love some thought or, you know, hearing you guys discuss further about, is a way to track old business items that get brought up and are unresolved. They don't necessarily, like, when they're new items, they don't, there's not a way to track those, and so like, individual board members or members of the public are kind of left to have their own notes to bring things back up, and to be like, hey, was anything ever done? So if there was a way to track that, maybe make it even publicly available, status updates, ticketing system, there's a lot of ways to go about that, but I'd be very interested to kind of hear more about that. The other one was tracking unanswered questions from the public. Ms. Kuzempel, I really appreciate your efforts to take notes and try your best to answer everything that comes up. I've talked before about your rapid-fire questions sometimes that you get, but there are still some things that do get missed, so a way to, you know, try to keep track of those questions, and then, even if it's questions that you guys, like, sometimes you guys don't have the answers, right? So it's not that you're intentionally ignoring the questions that are getting asked, but it's, hey, we don't have that information. But the public would still like answers on those, so being able to keep tabs on, you know, hey, we were asked this question, we had a follow-up that we needed to, you know, do the research, get the information, make it available, again, during old business, or, you know, if there's a way to like, publish an update of like, hey, here's the questions that were asked, here's, you know, references to resources, or however we can kind of fill in the gaps to make sure we get those, that would be, I think, awesome for, you know, the public and those questions that aren't able to be answered at the meeting. The other one was, you know, we've, you guys throughout this budget process have received a lot of feedback from the public, we'll say, right? So again, from what I've understood, there used to be a point in time where the public would actually vote on the budget. So again, also for the board retreat, like, I don't know if that's a topic that can be discussed as well, because I'm at least hearing from some members of the public over the past several months, that they might actually appreciate being more involved or having a say in the budget, and that would take some of the pressure off of the board, you know, holding that entire responsibility. So I don't know the pros and cons of that, but again, just maybe a food for thought, or again, an opportunity to clarify why the board feels one way is better than the other. So those are my thoughts and comments, thank you.
So the goal setting, New Jersey School Boards had a webinar about goal setting, so because it kept getting canceled, that was sent out to all the board members if they wanted to join the webinar. Also, Lori Bandlow had taken what we had compiled already, all of us had submitted ideas, and she put it into suggested board goals, and that was distributed via email with the board. And it's a retreat topic, obviously, Lori, I'm trying to get Lori to come to the retreat. Agendas, so what you see in the agenda, we've already discussed in committee, so, and then at the work session. So things will be discussed in committee, we report out at the work session, we talk about it at the work session, so all of these things, and this is sort of a long agenda, it's going to get longer. Wait until you see August, there's a lot on August, that's a huge one, especially with personnel. This tends to be a big one for finance. So we see these things in committee, we discuss them, the attachments, all of that, and our committees, again, our budget and finance, student activities and communication, and instructional affairs. So, and those things are discussed and looked at in detail that week of committee, then the following week for work session. In between those two weeks, we all can access those things on board docs, and we do, we talk about them, we look at them, and then they're on the agenda here. So this might seem like a lot, but we've been working with it for three weeks. Unanswered questions, I do try and keep track of that, that type of thing, and bring it back. Some things get put into committee, whether I say, let's put that into committee or not, it ends up going into committee, and sometimes, very often, the superintendent reaches out to the person that asked the question, maybe. So I don't know how I would track, like, you know, if someone gets up and asks a question about a particular issue, and someone else in the audience was interested in the answer, and that person gets a phone call. So all I would say to that is, if there's something that's asked and you really want a follow-up to it, just follow up with an email, and we'll get back to you with that as well. And, I need his pardon. The fourth one, oh, the public voting on the budget, that was the other thing. That's something that the community would vote to do, to move the date of that. So that's not even our decision. I don't know how that would become a ballot item, actually, though. Okay, yeah, it would have to be put on the ballot, and everyone would vote to make that, change that date. That was everything. Nicole DiNudi?
Page six of the June bill list was 147, $963.66 to Danovi in June. Annette was pretty distraught over what could happen over ESY when these kids show up without BCBA's. Who do you think does that now? There was at no point in time, and this, I feel like I saw red when this happened, I haven't seen Annette look that distraught over Danovi not being here in a really long time. It was visible that somebody even said, I can see how it's affecting Annette. Where was that response when our guys got cut 15 minutes? How come you didn't care that much about our kids not having age 15 minutes a day? You, of all people, Ms. Miller, should know the importance of that 15 minutes. Where was that same level of this emotional distraught, what are we going to do? Nobody showed that about what we're going to do without them. What are we going to do? You're worried about behaviorists over ESY who stand there and do nothing. I had two people text me tonight that are in this room, and three from at home, saying, thank you so much for speaking, I'm an assistant, and when I have a behavior, Danovi stands in that room and does nothing. Does nothing. Two people in this room said it, get up and say it. They still build for $116 an hour, and then on top of it, there's an elementary school student who they build for the rest of the day, and that child doesn't even have a b- of the day, and that child doesn't even have a behavior plan. And this district tells our people that they're not allowed to tell their parents. Our assistants are being duct taped to talk to parents. Our teachers are not allowed to say certain things to parents, and we're worried about what we're going to do without a BCBA. We have wonderful assistants that handle it every single day. You have a problem getting staff for ESY. Denove's getting paid $55.75 and $116 an hour. I can bet it that if you offered that to our own staff, they would step up. We would never be short for ESY. They're undervalued, they're underpaid, and they can't do that job. When a child is freaking out, who do you think does that job? Our assistants. And now who's going to do it without 15 minutes a day? But you can pay Denove $116 to stand there for that 115 minutes. You also just approved over $52,000 in assistant football coaches. Not only did they get approved for $7,500 almost each, another $3,000 on top of that for half of them for weight room coaches. You just said that the new weight room was only for football students. So why do we pay them, the assistants, another $3,000 to be weight room coaches? All in all, from what I understood today, there's about 27 kids that never play a second in that football game. But we have, we just approved nine assistant coaches. If you just cut the team to the kids that don't get to play anyway, which is hard for the kids, it's hard for the parents, we have to dress them. Parents don't pay for their uniforms. We supply their pads, their uniforms, the buses. They don't even get to play. How much money are we spending on those kids that aren't playing a sport and paying these assistant coaches $10,000 each for weight room? If it's just $60,000, that's three of their benefits a year. What, what are we doing? We're also on the agenda, we're paying $400 and $100 an hour for Apple counseling services? What, what specifically is that for? We have counselors. We just got rid of a director of counseling. What are we paying $100 an hour to for another counseling service? Maybe I just don't understand, and I'm asking what it's for. There's also a whole page on what we pay to Gloucester County Special Services. I don't know what this is for, and I would like to understand that. It says occupational and physical therapy, $617 per diem. Speech-language therapy, $617 per diem. We're paying $2,200 for assistive technology assessment. Why are we paying somebody else for that? And then my own child got an assessment this year, and the device we got for her wasn't even the best one. I found one online from the same company. I was never even offered that. And they said they had to go by the assessment. Really? Why don't you go by the people that work with her every day and her mother? There's a whole page that we pay Gloucester County Special Services, $600, $700, $800 per diem, $2244 per assessment, $1632 per assessment. Why are we not paying this to our in-house staff?
We actually use Gloucester County Special Services specialized staff. We have staff who have credentialing that requires specific roles from people who are approved to do those roles. So for example, I can't go to our sub-agency for someone who does occupational therapy. So if somebody goes out on a maternity or if there's, you know, a long-term illness, you have to have people approved in the event that they can provide those services. So I, I also wanted to say that I've been in the district a long time, and I have always valued the assistance in this district. When I was a special education teacher, 22 years, principal another seven, so in a building many years, I have been a strong advocate to, to ensure that there, that there's training. We can always do better. But there has never been a moment in my career where I have not felt passion for our assistance in terms of emotional response. I can't necessarily speak to emotion because everybody reacts to different things in different ways. The reaction that perhaps the public saw this evening was board-certified behavior analysts do, do a different job than an assistant. And the board-certified behavior analysts are, are key in terms of the development and execution of the behavior plan in terms of guiding staff. So when we have students with IEPs, it is my job, when I'm not the assistant, or the acting superintendent, when I'm the assistant superintendent of special education, I have to make sure that we are compliant. I just was unsure if the board understood the implications of not having that service. That being said, the board has spoken this evening. We're always looking to do better. We're always looking at agencies that we use and in terms of paring down costs, absolutely. But I really do want to go on record as saying, because many of the people sitting in the back of the room know me, Angela and I have worked very closely over the, the years since I've taken this position. And I would never want any assistant in this district to think that I don't value the, the work that they do. They, they work very hard and they are essential. They are not a luxury, they are essential to the programs and the students that we have. So I just wanted to go on record as saying that because I believe you deserve better than that. So I wanted to make sure for the few people who are here and those who are watching, we are a community. Our special learners need us to work together. And sometimes I do have to reach out to agencies because we have ESS who can't provide those services. Same thing happens with nursing services. They don't provide me nursing. I have to have a, a different league of people to do that in districts. So that's it. Just wanted to clarify some, some of the, the questions. Thank you.
Can I ask, can I say that one thing? I would just say, a lot of people don't get to see what happens behind closed doors. And I know, Annette, you worked very hard behind those closed doors, and you did show emotion behind those closed doors, and you worked very hard to try to save as many people in positions as possible. And that was a lot of work on your part. So I just want to, you don't always get to see that, but I just wanted to acknowledge that you did, did do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Tarashi. I hear your cellphone chime in my nightmares. Jerry, I just wanted to let you know.
Is it going off?
No, but normally it is. And I hear it, it sounds like wind chime.
I had one thing I wanted to discuss, but with everybody coming up and making reference to different issues. I jotted down some notes, and I apologize in advance. First and foremost, let me talk about the weight room, the pavilion. It's not just for football. It's for all...
Lori corrected me.
I'm sorry?
Lori corrected me.
It's for all sports. But the, the impression we're getting is that it's just for football. That's not true. So for people to come up and make those kinds of allegations without knowing the real truth is unfair. Likewise, in regard to the money that came in, that ended up going toward that Pride Pavilion, that didn't have to go to the Pride Pavilion. That was a decision that was made by the administration that was in place at the time. You could have prioritized it anywhere. This was a necessity because of the number of young people who wanted to avail themselves of the weight room facilities that we already have. And then we were overwhelmed. I mean, it was like over 100 kids. And the room was not big enough to sustain that. That's what brought about that Pride Pavilion. So let's clear that up right away. In regard to the MOA for the support staff, five years, and people were concerned about the five years, the length of it, that's a safety factor for both the board as well as our members. It's a safety factor because, as Carol, you put it, you don't know where the market's going. You don't know where it is now. You don't know where it's going to be three years from now. It might go up, it might go down. So locking these people in now gives you the safety net of knowing where, in fact, that market's going to be. You don't know where the market's going to be, but you know the contract's there. So that's a safety net for them so that it eliminates the, the potential threat of privatization because they're under contract. It gives them a little bit more security, and it really gives you the knowledge in advance to know, "Shoo, that one's out of the way." I'm not sure where the other negotiations stand in regard to the supervisors, the administrators, the, obviously the WTEA, but all of these happen to come up simultaneously. You don't want that moving forward again. In regard to the behavioral specialists, Denove or whomever, we did have behavioral specialists in this district. We had two of them. And immediately, almost immediately when they applied for admission into the WTEA, NJEA, one by one, they were let go. I'm not quite sure why. It's not for me to determine why. But if they were replaced with what we have now, the cost I don't think ends up being Lastly, when it's all said and done, the district is in trouble. But it's not without the possibility of being saved. We, the members of the WTEA, the WTSSPA, are willing to work with the district, working with, work with the board to do whatever we can to correct what's going on here. But we need to be informed. We need that communication. We're willing to sit down with the board anytime you want. Is the board allowed to talk to us? There's an answer that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. If I could just clarify?
Yes.
Mr. Tarashi, I just want to clarify, I did not say that I didn't know where the market was going.
No, I don't.
I just want to make sure that I didn't get the information as to where the market was. And in terms of negotiating salaries, I've never been a part of like 20-plus years of doing anything with negotiations, that if the market happens to trend down for any reason, you cannot lower someone's salary. You can only increase it if it goes up. I mean, so I never alluded that I, that the market was trending, I didn't know where it was trending. I don't think we can really do that. And if anything, if we're really looking at education, special education populations, I don't think we're trending down anytime soon. So...
Without contract, it can't be...
So, so let me just finish. What I said was, is that I did not get the market data that I asked for, for a year. And I asked several times in public. I wanted the market data, and I did not get that. So I just want to be clear. Thank you. Thank you. Angela Taruso.
So just to clarify what you're asking about, when you asked that question, I stood at this podium and said, "NJEA had access to all of that for free." Nobody came to us. Nobody asked us for any information. Nobody gave it to us. That's the information we use when we negotiate. We use the market value. So, that being said, let me thank those of you that respected us enough and valued us enough to vote yes on this contract. Thank you. For those of you who did not, let me just say, you can ask all your questions that you want to ask, you'll see it if you haven't already seen it. This contract fixes the assistance issue. It fixes it. It will help us to get more assistance here because I stood at this podium also while you hired people at the fifth step of what I make after 17 years of working here. The fifth step, you hired multiple people. Now, a few of them did not last, I can tell you that. Because I'm sure when they got into those classrooms and saw what they were dealing with, they thought, "Why am I going to do this?" But when I asked why you hired people at that top step, the answer was, "We can't get anybody beneath that." So guess what? That was the starting point. You gave us the starting point. And not for anything, this is probably the fourth contract that I've negotiated on this side of the table, because I also was on that side of the table. We've gotten pennies on the dollar. And I know it's not always about the assistance, but this contract had to be about that. Because otherwise, you would have no one here. And these kids need to be in their home district. This is where they belong. It's where they deserve to be. And in order to do that, you have to respect the people who work with them. And that means paying them more. This MOA, contrary to what everybody wants to think it is, does that. And so they're going to see numbers, whatever you, whatever you want to see on it. You're, you're going to interpret that the way you want to interpret it. It fixes a problem we had. It's, I think you'll not have a problem finding people to come in on that step one. Okay? And it makes the people who are already here feel appreciated. Now, the biggest slap in the face with that was to take their benefits away. Because now that fixed nothing. So you took away benefits with one hand, and you gave us this raise with the other hand. So unless, if you want to talk about market value, give us the benefits back. And with that raise, yeah, then you got market value. But other than that, you don't. These people work their butts off every day. And in the, in the midst of all of this, that for the last two years has been so stressful, you know, and I know, Annette knows that, I know, we all know that. Everybody was so stressed. Not once did anybody say to me, "We need to go on strike." Now, I know we can't. But not once did somebody say, "I'm not showing up for work tomorrow." If they did it, they didn't tell us they were doing it. But I have to tell you, people came to work. They came to work every day, in tears some days, but they came to work every day. They took care of the kids that they needed to take care of. They always do. So this was about, you know, you want to talk about a five-year contract, and Mrs. Clancy was a disappointment. She came off that dais two meetings ago in tears to me, crying to me how much she appreciated the assistance. And then to implore the entire board to vote no? Oh, my God. That is the biggest slap in the face I have ever gotten. Believe me, that, that will not be forgotten for a very long time. Believe me. So I just want to say thank you to those of you who voted to approve this contract. We appreciate it. I know, we feel as though you appreciate us by doing that. So thank you.
Also, we, we have more contracts to settle, so it's not like this is going to, this conversation's going to continue as Jerry, you know. This has been the topic of conversation, but we still have to do the teachers, the principals, the supervisors as well. So it's a lot of money that we have to spend. I am happy that the assistants all got a significant raise. I was very S Y, voted yes. Okay, motion to close. I don't have any other cards. Is Jackie Tiger Williams here? I always lose her card. Okay, motion to close to the public.
Moved.
I can make that joke because she was my daughter's, our daughter's teacher. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.